Other than to apologize to our Auditor General and our Deputy Auditor General for this late start, we appreciate you are still here with us and we are turning it over to you.
Thank you very much, Megan. So, we are saving the best for last of today. We are talking about two items on the agenda tonight. One is the Office of Auditor General first-ever annual report for FY19. So, Ann is handing out the hot copy right now. And then the second item on the list is about our FY20 risk assessment and annual plan, which I got the opportunity to present it to the School Board last Thursday. So, now we can come back to, for a dialogue with you in case if you have any questions for me and Theresa. So, with that, with our annual report, and I believe you all have a hot copy, we also have the same electronic copy online as well. The only difference between the hot copy and the electronic copy is that on the electronic copy, there is a link to the actual audit reports, for those of you who want to go to the electronic version and go back to the issue reports. So, with that, with the Audit Committee recommendation this year, we are very grateful that we got the opportunities to present the mid-year report to the School Board a few months ago. And here is the annual report. And I encourage you to flip through the report. So, we, on the contents page, we listed out what is included, including about the, who we are and what we do, where you will see the four pillars of work for OAG, which is listed on page one of the hot copy report. So, today, we are going to talk about one of the four very important topics, which is the risk assessment. We also have internal audit, maintenance of the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. And I heard a lot of the feedback and comments from the School Board members is, hey, how could we raise the exposure of the hotline? So, if you turn to the back of the hot copy booklet, we have the hotline number listed and also an email that any community members or any of our employees can send their concerns or their questions to. So, it also highlights the outreach and education effort that we have done. And I'm very proud to say that this fiscal year, actually only through April 30th of 2019, I am at the bottom of page four, where it listed by outreach and education, that we spoke to over 800 FCPs employees. And I know that 800 is compared to like a 40,000 employees number, is still very tiny. But I do think that this is a very good first steps that the OAG has taken to spread the words about audit and compliance and in order also to raise the awareness of the hotline and also what OAG has accomplished. And then going on in the middle part of the report, it include the audit charter, because I think it's important to revisit and to focus to stay what our office responsibility is. And then to also highlight the Audit Committee members, since the OAG reports functionally to them on a monthly, monthly aspects about the reports and the different matters to the Audit Committee on a monthly basis. And then, and then starting on page 11, it summarized the OAG results for FY19. So, here you will see all the audit reports that we have issued and discussed at the Audit Committee table. And some of them, we did raise it to the full School Board table to discuss, to highlight the purpose of the audit, what we have done, what are the major outcomes, and what are the recommendations that we made. Last but not the least, on page 15, we also include a snapshot of the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, summary of the cases that we received from that, from direct mails and walk-ins. And we also, at that page, have a summary of the audit recommendation follow-up, because this is one of the key activity that OAG does, is to follow up upon each of the audit findings and recommendations. So, I know that I have been kind of like talking really quickly, but I just want to highlight the key points from the FY19 annual report. We are planning to do this on a annual basis, so you will, this is only the first time, but you will see this again, hopefully for FY2020 as well, to summarize our accomplishments and also the audits that are upcoming. So, with that, I would like to pause for a second and see if any one of you have questions on the FY19 annual report.
Ms. Schultz?
Right. So, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about, so, obviously, I have some particular concerns. My question on the facilities maintenance, because we had had a shift or a mindset in getting our CIP, our capital infrastructure upped from the Board of Supervisors, to shift some of the stuff that was in the operational funds over into capital infrastructure. Has that happened? Did you look at that as a part of the facilities maintenance? I mean, can you just tell me a little bit on some of these? You have facilities maintenance, five audits.
Yes. So, thank you, Elizabeth, for the question. So, this audit, I believe, was done in FY19. And what you see in front of you is the recommendations that we are still follow up upon. And I believe that the scope of that audit, because it was back in FY19, and the majority of the audit is focusing on how facilities maintenance is operated, I believe the focus is not on the CIP. And then we have, how many findings we, or...
What I mean is, what happened to the recommendations that came from that? Is there follow-up to the recommendations that came from that? Because now, we're like a year out, right? We're a year beyond that. And so, the recommendations that came out of that, is there follow-up to those recommendations and where we are on those?
So, we have five of them outstanding. So, if I remember, and Theresa, you can help me on it, one of them is related to bleachers inspection, that we have not been, I think in the past, we have not been hiring like a, like a formal, like a formal engineer. I think that's what the law is required to do. But then, FTS has been putting interfaces to get that done. So, that is in progress. And then the four other recommendations, if my memory serves me correctly, they are related to the timing of, we should have done more preventative work, rather than, you know, to fix, like reactive. But because of the lack of manpower in the facilities maintenance team, we were not able to do it. So, I think the four other recommendations are resource-dependent. That's why...
There's a reason I asked this question, because this is the dovetail to the earlier year-end budget review of, we rolled over $80 million. And we pulled out 25 million, 24 and a half million, and said, okay, we're gonna shove that into the fiscal '21 beginning balance. This is exactly the, basically, the question I was asking earlier, and why, where is the detail behind what, what we've rolled over and what is outstanding? So, for example, just to pick one earlier, I picked the safety and security review that we got a year, almost a year ago today. What's, what's outstanding from that list? A little bit like I had asked for the year-end budget, or the quarterly budget cycles, we should be showing in red the monies that we are not getting funded, you know, for like, you know, the military, military children and, you know, the monies that are missing that we could be doing. Well, to me, this is a to-do, this is basically, if you think about your household, this is your to-do list of all the things that need to be done around your house. And some of it's small, replacing your rakeboard, some of it's big projects, replacing the entire roof. These are the undone things that are hanging out there that I'm hearing are resource-dependent. The question is, where does the dovetail happen that, and I just, I'm sure there's other things, but I specifically picked facilities maintenance. And I've been to stadiums that have, I can see why bleacher maintenance would be a concern. Where is the dovetail between the things that get left over? It's just like our committee reports, when the committees come and say, here's these same things that we've, you know, recommended that are still not done. The dovetail between the leftover things undone, and before we decide to prepare a year-end budget rollover and decide that that 80 million, maybe that 80 million should have been 72 and a half million, and some of that money should have gone to some of the things here. Do you see what I'm saying now?
Right. You're talking about a strategic review of the audit reports as we do year-end money true-up. And I think that's something, you know, I know Lee and Marty are talking over there, and I'm sure are hearing what we're talking about. That's something I think we can continue to do. On the year-end, you just saw, you saw years-long issues being proposed to resolve. Softball fields at Justice, and I'm just sharing, multiple-year issues, the Edison STEM Lab, multiple-year issue. Is there an opportunity to perhaps do more pulled from all the audit reports? Yes. I don't know whether our team had a chance to look through, relook through every one of them to make our final determination, but I think we can do more of that. We're starting to do more of that multi-year look when we do year-end. I think making sure the board knows our defined process and doing it will help, so that when we get to the table year-end, there's consensus.
My question is, how did the things that got on the list in the year-end review that we heard earlier today, how did they make the list? And where is the decision process that the things that are hanging out on an audit report that are still undone from a year ago, how those aren't done, like?
Right. The ones that got on come through Cabinet, come through Cabinet, and I ultimately sign up. I'm just being honest, what ones, what you're really asking is, what, what's the criteria by which it comes forward and is put into the package, and what is not? And, you know, I can, I can take that feedback back and think about that with the team.
Those are years-long things, too. That's the point I'm trying to make, is, and there's a risk profile. The beautiful thing about these is, some of these have a risk profile already associated with them, so that they're effectively vetted, that some of these may be relatively higher priority in the grand scheme, but I don't feel like they're being looked at.
We'll go back and take a look, we'll go back and take a look through these audits and see if there's anything else outstanding. Again, I don't know that we could do everything that was still outstanding in the audit. We have a backlog when it comes to facilities, but what more can we do?
I don't want you to do everything. That's the whole point of prioritizing. But we gotta look at the list first to figure out, and it's gotta be, it's, it's a linear process. It's gotta happen sometime before or in concert with, as you're doing frankly, quarterly reviews, but then certainly penultimately with a, with a year-end review.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. The first question is, as I see here, that there's the audit buzz, email newsletter. I don't recall seeing it. Are the board members receiving it automatically every quarter?
Yes.
Okay. Is that correct?
I believe, Ms. Coe, don't we need to be signing up for it in order to receive it?
So, what has happened, I'm trying to memorize the, the timing, right? So, I think I sent out an email to all the School Board members in one of many other emails that you all may have received from me, that to have the directions and guidance how to sign up. We include the School Board members EAA on it, too. So, we say that if the School Board members are interested, you can, or the EA can help you to sign up. And it is through FCPS News to Choose. I believe that's the term.
Okay. So, sign me up. I want, put me on the list. I want, I want to make sure I'm getting that, so that if we can, if we can have that added. I'm sure there are other board members that would like that as well. So, I want to turn up to page 15 of the report. And there is, looks like 19 total fraud, waste, and abuse hotline matters. And there are two that are open. And can you just talk about what, what types of matters are coming in on the hotline, in sort of, you know, in sort of the subject area, where are they, where are they coming in most often? The ones that are closed, are they closed, and did you find that there was fraud, waste, and abuse, or did you, did you discover that there wasn't? Just give us a little more detail on that.
Sure. Thank you. So, we presented this inquiry areas, by areas, each month with the Audit Committee. So, you can see that the areas that we look at, we try to make it by the themes of the calls that we received. And just to clarify, it doesn't just include the hotline, but it also have, sometimes people walk in and talk to me or Theresa. Sometimes we got emails. So, it's different methods that we collect people's feedback and concerns. And then we categorize by different areas. So, here you see that we have conflict of interest-related matter, documentation-related matter, whether it is sufficient or insufficient, documentation in a certain matter, human resources matter. And sometimes we receive call that have absolutely nothing to do with fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, too, and I'm sure you can understand that. And we have procurement, residency, use of assets, and vendor-related questions. So, how we determine as between closed and open, closed meaning that we have reviewed the case. Sometimes, OAG reviewed it by ourselves, depending on the types of matters that come in. Sometimes, we work together with human resources to do it, because they may be employee-related questions that we have to work with EER on it. And closed means that we have thoroughly reviewed that situation, and then we determine that either there are evidence or not evidence to support the claims, and then we close it accordingly. So, for those cases that we found there are evidence to deem, you know, something misappropriate may be happening, the School Board members get a brief from me, mainly through the closed sessions that we had before. So, so you get a brief on all the cases that are substantiated. And then for the remaining one, if they are unsubstantiated, we will close as well after we thoroughly looked into the case.
And so, are you, are you able to give us the information for the, this work session on how many of those closed matters involve actual fraud, waste, and abuse?
So, I don't think I have the numbers in front of me, but we can do this as a follow-on items, because I don't want to say an incorrect number, and then I could not substantiate afterwards. But my memory is telling me that is definitely less than like five of them, but I just don't know the exact number. And also, when you say fraud, waste, and abuse, some of them are non-compliance with FCPS policy and regulations. And then, do you consider as fraud, waste, and abuse? I, I don't know about that one, so.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the, let's say, the top of page 15. And I guess the other piece of it that I'd like to understand a little bit more is the monetizing of the audits, and whether or not you can give information to the board of identified savings that, as a result of the audit, that accrue to the division.
Okay. We, we can consider that. And I, I think that's a great idea, to look at saving. But at the same time, I just want to think about the pros and cons as well, right? For us, I really want to be like unbiased and independent, to look at matters. And as soon as a cost of saving is attached to what we do, and I'm just afraid that our focus may change. And I think it's good to have both checking and without a monetary value, but those situation may still create, like Elizabeth mentioned, like a key risk profile to us.
Of course, yeah, right.
May not have a dollar attached to it, but it may bring FCPS down tomorrow. Are we going to look at them or not? And I think we should. So, it should be a balancing between the two.
No, I totally agree with that approach. But I would, I would like, I think, some information, you know, where, where there is obvious savings to the systems, I think it would be helpful for the public to, to know that the work in the, in the Auditor General's office is accomplishing that. The, the last thing I'd like you to talk about just briefly is the sole-source contracts reviews you've done. And just earlier today, Ms. Burden talked about how they've been working on improving, or decreasing the number of sole-source contracts and really sort of diving into that. Can you, have you been doing any work in that area, and what are the results?
So, if I may, maybe I would like to say, if anyone has more question on this, the only reason is because that is part of the FY20 plan.
Okay.
So, if I can hold that question a little bit, and then I can address that in a little bit, unless if I can go to the plan now, I, Megan, what's...
Well, I mean, I, we could go to the plan. I just don't want necessarily prevent the other board members who want to speak still to this issue here first. So, is there...
That's all I have, so.
Okay. So, what I would say is, maybe we'll put that question to the next part and let the rest of the board members get through their questions. So, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Ms. Coe, I just want to thank you. The work of your office is invaluable, and the quiet leadership that you take in, in bringing, or what you bring to your work is just so much appreciated, because it really does make people want to work with you. And it's, it's a wonderful incentive for staff to take your input and use it as constructive ways of improving our processes. I am a little concerned that we still have 33 of the 49 corrective actions recommended outstanding. I do think it would be helpful if we could have a full list of what the 33 outstanding corrective actions are, so that we, if, if individual board members or the board itself wants, wants to prioritize the resolution of those corrective actions, we can do so. Additionally, I want to somewhat talk about the, the concept of monetizing the value of the work you do. And I do think it's important to look at how you have saved the system money, either through offering suggestions on how we can do things more effectively, or identifying areas where we, we could do things, they weren't working the way we expected. But more importantly, I think we also have to look at the value of the work you do from a reputational risk, because often, something may not have huge monetary value, but if it is a behavior or an approach that we are using in the school system that causes people to not trust the school system, or to question what we're doing, then that does have a negative impact on reputational risk. And so, I am glad that you, in the work you do, you do take into account the reputational risk. And so, thank you very much for that. I also see that you're going to be bringing to us more information on the security audit. And I look forward to that, because obviously, that is an area that is of concern to all of our families. Luckily, in the K-12 results, it seems that most people feel safe and secure in their schools, but I believe that we can always improve. So, I look forward to that audit. Thank you. And by the way, I love your annual plan, or your annual report. It's very nice.
May I respond? Of course. Thank you. So, with related to Karen's, your first comment, we can absolutely do that. At the same time, I want to say that, that the chart that we put in here is as of March 31, 2019. So, some of the outstanding recommendations actually have been closed. In a few days, I will be presenting a revised one with the Audit Committee on July 24. So, may I suggest that, at that time, we can share with the School Board as well, what are the remaining outstanding recommendations are. And I, for example, I want to say, for contracting and procurement, the outstanding recommendations for two have been closed, and which do not reflect it here. So, I want to make sure that we can get a more updated chart at that time, if it works with you.
That would be great. If we could have as the next step, that we would have an updated chart, and then pending the results of your security art, audit discussion on July 24, make a decision as to whether or not you bring that full discussion to the board, because I think that's one that there might be a lot of interest in. Thank you.
Any other board members want to speak to this first portion, where we're looking over the annual audit report? I do want to speak briefly, probably more to my colleagues than to Ms. Coe, since we talked about this during the audit, most recent Audit Committee meeting. And that has to do with the Board's guidance on what we would like for the role of the Office of the Auditor General. As of now, the way the Office is structured and the focus is, even when we're doing performance audits, which the Board did view as important beyond just financial audits, the focus right now is to ensure that the Division is operating with proper controls in place. And so, one of the things that I had raised was, we're not just wanting to know about whether there's compliance to the controls, but whether or not the programs, the operations we're doing, are they effectively and efficiently achieving what we would hope for in the $3 billion operation? Because if it's not being effective or efficient, then the superintendent and all of his team can be doing everything within the controls we have in place, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're operating at that effective level. And so, I was hoping, Ms. Coe, you might be able to round that out and speak to it a little bit more about what direction or guidance you would need from the Board, if there's something we need to change, whether it's in the regulations related to the Office of the Auditor General, or whether it's about your role as the Auditor General and your job description. But I, I do feel that that's sort of like the next level of robust audit work that we would want to consider. And all of this is still based on, how can we be, yeah, from a continuous improvement mindset, basically.
Maybe I can start, and if any School Board members have ideas to add to, because I think, Megan, this is a great question, talking at a high level, what should be our scope of work, if I hear you correctly, and where should be our focus areas for the audits? So, if I may, first started with some, it, the auditing terminology. We heard about financial audit many times, meaning that we are mainly looking at the numbers, whether the numbers are right or not. The other type of audit is generally called it as a performance audit. So, in the auditor mindset, there are two major group of audits. So, financial, the other is performance. And within performance audit, it has multiple different layers of things that we can look at. So, we can look at compliance with laws and regulations, FCPS policy and procedures, and I think that's what Megan is referring to. We can also look at how effective and efficient the controls and processes are. So, examples are like, in the past year, we looked at trades and staffing reserve as an example. And then we saw that, hey, you know what, the process is manually done and not electronically done. So, it's really subject, you know, to even unintentional errors that people may make. Does the FCPS policy and regulations say, hey, it has to be electronic? No. Is a recommendation set made by OAG saying, in order to, to spend that $1 more effectively and efficiently, let's do something different. So, in our audit report, we propose to, for financial services to consider to change that process from manual to an electronic process. So, to me, that is one type of performance audit, which is looking at improving the ongoing processes and controls at FCPS, and which is clearly tied to our current mission. And then the last type of audit is the program effectiveness. So, how do we know that the money that we spend, and again, I'm just using it as an example, for example, the ESOL program, did it generate the results that the School Board members expect to be, or leadership team members expect to be? So, for us, we will not, with the current team composition, we will not be able to validate yes or no, because myself and my team member do not have the specific expertise to address that question. And in order to do those type of audits, do I... And in order to do those type of audits, do I suggest any changes in the team mix in order for us to do it? I think that we need to think very carefully about that because each of the focus areas do need very specialized expertise. So like certain professional who have more experience in, in a subject matter may not know about all the other subject matters. So in those situation, my suggestion is maybe we can consider to hire external expertise who can do it because then we can keep that flexibility and have that expertise to help on with different projects. While the OAG team will be team member that we have a fundamental knowledge of how FCPS works, right? We still are very complicated organization, not to try to say this is not, but we can, we should hire someone who have the specialized expertise to look at the technical area. That would be my suggestion, but definitely open for discussion.
Thank you. So the reason I was, maybe I can give sort of an example is that if, as Dr. Braybrand and the school division looks at the ways in which we enhance the human resources department and we look at our current practices for how we hire and manage, I believe it's the Office of, is it Employee Equity or?
Talent Acquisition Management.
No, not that one.
I think she's referring to EER.
Oh, EER.
Right, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And so that one in terms of how we've been operating to date in terms of is for a complex organization, the third largest employer in Virginia, do we have a, the best in class for that type of operations? If not, then what would it take for us to get to best in class? And part of it is to look at how's it operating now? And so if I understand correctly, the way the OAG office is structured, that being is an example, other than saying, here are your policies and procedures for what EER is supposed to do for FCPS employees based on what we have on paper, but is it a best in class? We don't know that. But if information's coming to us saying we need, that's an area of improvement, then how, how do we have the Office of Auditor General help us and help the division get to a better best in class? Is that a good example to try and walk us through what you currently are empowered to do versus the example I was giving?
Is it Karen, you have a comment or should I respond first?
Yeah, it's a really interesting point that you bring up, Ms. McLaughlin, about, you know, how do we take what we're doing with the OAG office now and whether we take it to a new level, which is a more in-depth of how do we, how do we help the superintendent with continuous improvement on different layers? So it's really program effectiveness. And, and we used to actually have an organization called Program Effectiveness that's now in somewhat, or we used to do program, more work in that area, but now we, now we have ORC. But I actually want to put in, and maybe I'm throwing a wrench into it, but it's something that I've been struggling with for a while, which is, do we need to look at having a compliance organization that says, this is what we are, you know, this is what we've committed to doing. We do it. Now we go back and we make sure that everything that we committed to doing is actually done. And if not, it's kind of like how we identify the 33 remaining open items. And so it allows us that continuous improvement circle or cycle that keeps, you know, determines whether we are being as effective, as effective as we want to be. And so the question is, is that an OAG function? Is that a compliance function? But we see that not only with our general operations, but when we hear from parents about supports in the area of IEPs, you know, and, and just checking the boxes, making sure we're doing everything we commit to doing.
So I, I had asked the question before Ms. Corbett Sanders weighed in. Walk us through in the existing structure we have right now, how would we look to strengthening and improve our EER versus what you would need if we move toward a program effectiveness model? Or in other words, grow OAG to have that capacity?
It is a very good question, but at the same time, I don't know if I have a quick response as well because it's very, we need to think about the strategy where the school board would like to lead OAG to, together with my expertise, right? So if you ask me at this stage, we may be leading into discussing some of the FY 20 audit topics. I think that there are still some work we can do, like about, for example, looking at the construction contracts, looking at the procurement and the contracting procedure that Tom raised, the sole source situation, are we bringing the numbers down? Are the existing processes and controls working or not? Time and attendance. So I think there are still some challenges we should look at. And when I say challenges, I don't necessarily mean it negatively. But to me, I think, and again, I'm just speaking as a professional auditor, what I have looked at and what I have, I have done, I think we should first look at those issues and then to really think through what would be best for us to move forward from the current model to a program, like more focusing on the program effectiveness model. Because that is, we need to develop baseline, first of all. That's immediately come to mind. And each one of us may think about the baseline a little bit differently than the other. To the example that you mentioned about, and just as an example, right? How the ER department works within HR is that world-class? Then, I'm a very black and white person, so how do we determine world-class? Should we look at how a private company is operating with ER or, or equivalent department? Or should we look at the largest school districts, how they operate? Or should we look at the neighboring districts, how they operate? So I just see that, that the baseline, we would need to really develop that so that the majority of the school board agreed with that approach before we can look at, and then before we can measure the gaps between where we are doing now and that also that comparison number. And with related to program effectiveness, I will go back to my same comment before is that we can look at, again, I'm just being very honest and candid with you all about what we can and cannot do, is to assess the policy that the school board established and thus the regulations FCPS has put together. Are we doing that? Because my, my assumption is that those policy and regulations are developed with a specific outcomes that FCPS would like to achieve. So that's my assumption number one. But if that is not, then it's an other story. So I still see there's a lot of value to see, to do if there is a fidelity in operating with the existing controls and processes framework. Am I making sense or am I answering, responding to your questions?
You, you are, I'm going to let Dr. Braybrand speak and then I know Ms. Keis Kamara is up. I'm just going to leave it at this to your answer because I appreciate your, your genuine efforts to answer my question. If we have school board policies, because we do the best we can, but we don't, we're not experts ourselves, or we have existing controls in place, but no one from the superintendent of the school board knows whether they're adequate controls and they're, they're effective policies, then you can end up giving us really great news that we're doing, everybody's in compliance with what we've gotten in place, but what if it turns out it's really not effective, what we have in place? But that, that's, that's where I'm struggling because I don't want us to just keep saying, yep, for what you got in place, it's good, but what we have in place may not be as good as it can be. So I'll go ahead and let other board members. And Dr. Braybrand, you were going to speak. I have Ms. Keis Kamara, then I have Ms. Strauss. Anybody else want to be added to the list? Okay?
I would just say real quick, it was years ago when I think this idea came, you now have the right team in place to do the work that the board originally wanted to do, which was bring financial integrity and transparency and making sure there was a, a focus on our internal controls and a, a full-fledged professional audit team. And you have that now. So that's a big win. I, I would, I would have the board balance about expanding that role yet until you've gone through some of those key things in your audit plan that you want to get to and instead do what I think Mr. Wilson was doing is, or, or somebody else. I, I have to admit, I just started to check a couple of emails just because when I sit here all day, I have emails to go back to do at night, which many of you do too. What's still outstanding on what Esther has brought to our attention and our follow-up on that? And I've been meeting with Mr. Smith. We have weekly check-ins and this is one of the things that we've talked about, looking at the status of audit reports. But it's a whole separate thing to ask whether my team and/or Esther has gone and assessed our work against national best practices and operations or financial protocols. I, I think as professionals, we're working to do that. We're going to national conferences. Mr. Smith and Ms. Burden, I've put them in a consortium of large school divisions to review best practices and financial protocols that they said is the best professional development they've ever had in their careers. So I think we're moving in that direction. There's always room to get better, but I would just, I would just say the board, I'd stay the course as much as possible, still a little bit with Esther and her team to get through some of the big audit pieces here. And maybe it's additional follow-up that I need to do with you all to show you where we've closed loops on some of the corrective actions or tied back some of these things that are outstanding in the audit to our budget, which we've been moving our budget to the strategic plan. This is probably another area we can spend more time aligning the audit follow-up or the audit recommendations to our, our strategic plan as well. So I've taken that from this discussion thus far.
It's fine, just a small clarification. It isn't just financial audits. When we built the office, it's also performance audits. But, you know, just so you know, that there's a whole big piece to performance there. But thank you for that input. Ms. Keis Kamara, and then I have Ms. Strauss and then Ms. Hines.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Coe. I have enjoyed being on the audit committee this past year and I think you do a great job. I want to offer perhaps a slightly different view, or maybe I may have missed it in between trying to eat my salad. But for me, overall, I'm looking to the audit committee to help us avoid reputational risk. It is one of those ways that we assure the community that we are, we have our eyes open, we are on the wall and we are being watchful of, and good stewards in fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility. So that is always the perspective from which I am coming as one board member and other people can chime in on that. So we've talked about in the, in our committees, some of the topics that we can do now and things that we have to do later. If I had an overall concern or something perhaps to look out for, because I really can't be critical, I think we're just constantly improving, is that the percentage of the budget out of a $3 billion budget, the percentage that we're able to cover or the percentage that we're tending to look at, even if it's a sample of, is very, very small. And if I talk to members in the community, I think that they would probably have more concern, let's say, they'd have less concern about the teachers in their local schools and more concerns about the big spending items happening more on the leadership level. And to a large extent, we haven't really looked at any of that, at least not while I've been on the audit committee. So I would just say that's a perspective that I'd like to take into account, looking at it through the lens of you can help provide the eyes that the community feels they need to have. And then we certainly give you direction. Now, having said that, I know sometimes the community may say something that's, it's not necessarily based in fact, but you provide us that check. The other thing that I know I've mentioned to you and I know that you are currently following practices that are utilized other places, but I would like for, because we, I do believe we should do everything we can to be accountable, is to look at those things that we can do to keep a clear delineation between your office and that of staff. Because I think that that helps to keep the, the sense, the public sense, the public awareness of the integrity of the process. So if I had two overall concerns or things to consider, those would be the two.
Ms. Keis Kamara? All right. I have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Hines, and then go back for Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. And again, I, I want to thank Ms. Coe. I, I think your office is doing an outstanding job. I'm just very pleased with the progress that we've made. In terms of, it's, it's critical that, well, and tonight we will have questions about the audit plan because that actually sets out the work that we want your, your current office to do. And a large school division is complex. We have ORC, we have our strategic plan, we have the metrics that the board has agreed on in those reports. So we have many ways of evaluating all the various aspects of the school division because the bottom line is teaching and learning. Are we making the best use of all of our resources for our children to learn those things we think that are important? In the past, we have contracted out, sometimes where the audit office manages the contract, but that we contract with other experts in the field. We did an IT audit once. It was phones that we contracted out. We've done very large management that, that looked holistically at the whole management style of the school division. I think we've done that two or three times. There are studies where there has been a look at a specific educational approach that was not done through audit, but it was done through the instructional side of the house. So there are many ways that we can ask questions and get them answered. And, and whatever we assign to your shop to look at, if you feel that you need another kind of expertise, we've contracted before. That's not hard to do. It's up to us to decide what, what, what that plan is going to be. And as I say, we've done small farming out that were fairly modest and we've done some very, very large ones. So, you know, whatever we decide that we want to take a look at and study, but it is important that we understand the expertise that is required when you talk about how we're going to approach something. We, we, we count on your professional judgment because you're very good at figuring out how do you actually construct the study, what you need to, to answer the questions that we have asked. Because simply asking the question of how something works, it is how you actually set up the study and that, I have great respect for how you approach that. So we can contract out, we can do that through the audit plan, however. So we have lots of opportunities to do that if we want. We just have to decide.
Thank you very much, Ms. Strauss. And I now have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Schultz, unless anybody else wants to be added in.
Thank you. My questions have been answered, but thank you for this report. I, I miss working with you on the audit committee. This is, this is a great report. I, I think you're all doing great work and I did have a couple of questions, but they've been answered, so thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. I have Ms. Schultz for a go-back.
Yeah, I just want to dovetail what Karen Keis Kamara said about the, the, you specifically highlighted the reputational risk. And while I haven't worked directly with you, Dr. Braybrand, that's a little bit what I'm talking about in terms of the risk profile. And when you went and highlighted the things that are coming for the coming audit report, I felt like there were some things that were in there, although I didn't see the, the risk profile, that you identified, look, these are, these can cause us problems and we can have different kinds of risk. We can have financial risk. We can have a legal risk. We can have reputational risk. None of those is necessarily less important than another, but the way in which we become exposed, and we shouldn't do things just because we're going to be exposed, but it changes the nature of the priority of what the superintendent and his leadership team should be looking at in combination with us as a recommendation to us in the, in the building of the original budget of what the priorities are. of the original budget, of what the priorities are, which is one of the reasons I favor a zero-based budgeting. In the building of the original budget, the managing of the budget as we go along for the quarter ends, which you should be frankly, I think, paying attention to, in terms of, you know what you are seeing with the existing audit and potential exposure, but you also, as this shows, know what's left on the list that's still undone. And so here's these things undone. The superintendent is working with LT over the course of the year, managing these quarterly budget reviews, and you should be a part of the conversation in some fashion, saying, hey, you're looking like you're going to have an $80 million rollover for the next carryover. I'm not entirely sure that that's, you know, somehow this, there has to be a synthesis with our strategic plan, in taking what's left on that list, based on some kind of prioritization or risk profile, and helping us mitigate risks that you have found in a prioritized fashion, whether they're reputational, whether they're financial, whether they're legal, and then work that into, you know, the budget cycle over the course of the year.
I get it, I get it. That's my nugget from the whole thing of Megan, you, many of you saying, no, I get, take this, put the same strategic lens on it for the budgets we've done with other things. Correct, correct.
All right, I know it's been extremely long work session day for the board, and for all the staff that have been here, even earlier this morning. So if there aren't any other questions, I think we'll move on to the recommended plan for this upcoming year, and hopefully we will be able to wrap up very soon.
Thank you, thank you. So since I presented already last Thursday, so I don't want to belaboring you all with the same presentation, maybe I would like to respond to Tom's questions, since he asked a question specifically about sole source controls and processes, where we are with it. I would like to highlight one of the six audits that my office proposed, is to retake a look at that, since most of the newer controls becomes effective after July 2017. So now, we are already in July 2019, so we have two years of past data to look at, so that is on my proposal, and I would like to retake a look at it, not only the sole source contracts, we want to also take a samples of other procurement method contracts as well, so we can look at if the newer or revised regulations or policy are being followed or not. So that is in response back to Tom's, your earlier questions. So with that, I want to see anyone else have questions on the plan, and Theresa and I are happy to discuss that with you.
Ms. McLaughlin seems to have left, so I'm just going to jump in with one question, since you were answering my earlier questions. So the question I had to do, has to do with the construction contract management, performance audit, that you've included. In that, since we sort of have an ongoing construction company that we manage in building and renovating our schools, I'd like to know at the end of the process, and I'm not sure whether this was something, and see you've got, looking at potential risk, are ineffective procurement practices and insufficient construction contract monitoring? But I'd like to, at the end of this, also to have an answer as to whether or not our cost per square foot for renovations and construction is consistent with industry standards for, you know, school renovations and construction, I think, because that would, that would go to the issue of, you know, how efficient is our contracting? You know, are we competitively bidding? Are we managing change orders effectively, which tend to drive additional costs? So I just, as part of it, I'd like you to keep your eye on that, because I think that would be a useful piece of information to understand what the cost per foot is.
That we will do. So is benchmarking with the other school districts, I think it has to be neighboring school districts, right? Because the cost would be?
Yeah, and I think you have to be careful, because, you know, construction, say, of an office site, is going to be very different, in terms of what their cost per square foot in terms of development is going to be versus a school. You do have to make sure it's an apples-to-apple comparison, so yeah, you're correct.
Okay, we got it. Other board members? Do you have questions about the upcoming audit plan? All right, well then I guess we can call this work session concluded, and people can head on home.
Do we have any next steps? I just want to make sure. Maybe we have no next, I want to be fully compliant, so is it, we don't have?
I had a pretty big next step, which is integrating, I mean, I know you said that you would do it.
Okay, good.
But that's, to me, that was, is integrating, integrating, integrating budget review cycle, beginning, quarterly review, year-end, into priorities, and risk mitigation strategies?
I'll work with Marty Lee and Esther on taking a strategic look at these audit recommendations, and embedding them in our year-end and quarterly and budget processes.
Don't forget the language on compliance. If we say we're going to do it, we do it, and then we verify that we did it.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.